The January 9th, 2013 meeting of the Ascension Parish Planning Commission will now come to order. Madam Secretary, please note that all commissioners are present. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item four, as is customary, we'd like for our staff members to introduce themselves to the public.
Stacy Webb, Secretary for Planning and Development.
Lindsay Amanda, Legal Counsel for Planning and Zoning.
Ricky Compton, Planning and Development Director.
Michael Petty, Parish Planner.
Lance Brock, Zoning Official.
Tim Ward, Engineering.
Thank you. Item number five, Chairman's Comments. I have a few words to say this evening. The members of this commission have just completed what I feel has been a very successful year of service. This success has happened because of several things. First of all, the commissioners have done their homework, becoming very well informed about the matters that they considered. They have acted in a very conscientious manner and brought their considerable knowledge and experience to our deliberations. Second, the Planning Department staff has provided information which has been very helpful in the decision-making process. In addition, they have brought up matters, usually ordinances, that needed revision so that we could make appropriate recommendations to the parish council. And finally, we were fortunate to have effective leadership in the person of Robert Burgess, our chairman in 2012, who maintained decorum during our proceedings and made sure that public opinion was received and all viewpoints were considered. My goal as chairman for this year is to come close to his level of expertise. Ascension Parish appears to be on the cusp of another significant period of growth, based on the reports of the many industrial expansions and new endeavors in our area. It will be important that we, as a commission, continue to strive to be fully informed about the issues that we will be facing. For this reason, I met with Mr. Compton earlier this week and requested that he bring up in his staff report the possibility of providing additional training for commissioners, similar to what we received last year when we first got on the commission. Even though we are not required to have this training like we were last year, I believe that additional training would help us to address the crucial issues that we will be facing in the coming years. Okay, item six is public comment. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone that signed up for a public comment?
No.
Okay, thank you. Item seven, approval or denial of the minutes of the December 12, 2012 Planning Commission meeting. Gentlemen, what's your pleasure?
I move for approval.
Moved by Mr. Chafisi, second by Mr. Calendar. Any objection? The minute stand approved. Item eight, public hearing to approve or deny the following family partitions. A, the Berto property, lots 1, 2, and 3, Earls and Associates.
James Fogg, representing Earls and Associates, and Miss Suzanne on the following family partition. Comments were made, onto the plat addressed and corrected, asking the commission for approval.
Okay, and as is noted in our information, the staff has... no objection, is that correct?
All comments addressed, staff comments approved.
Okay, all right, so any questions of the commissioners?
No questions.
Any cards or question?
Yes. As noted in 17426 of the code, it suggests that a letter of approval from the parish health unit, and I don't see that in the packet. Has there been such? This is to the staff, as well as have you applied?
No. Yeah, no letter's been received.
Now, my concern is, this, once again, this is part of the code. This is 174026, B sub, B sub 1, that it asks that it be part of the packet, so...
It used to be. It used to be. When we'd send, submit plats, the parish would submit it also to the health unit, and then you'd get a letter of objection or approval. Somehow along that stopped.
The health unit stopped responding. So...
The health unit stopped responding to all of our requests. I guess that they were overwhelmed with whatever responsibilities they have on a daily basis, and so it just didn't make sense for us to continue sending letters and not getting responses. The majority of these are going to be individual private MODAD plants that they're going to have to go get permitted outside of our jurisdiction and responsibility anyway. But that brings up a good point. Should we adjust the code where family partitions specifically require that letter prior to approval? And that makes sense.
Well, when you consider what it states and why, it does make sense.
Right.
And either we're going to adjust the code or some other entity will at least give us that review and that recommendation.
Before they'd put a MODAD or anything, they have to get their approval anyway. So before they would build on the lot, they'd have to have the approval.
I understand that.
Yeah.
But again, as part of the process...
Yeah, I agree with what you're saying, yes. Somehow it got dropped out of the process. Like you said, they stopped responding, so they stopped.
I think it was over two years ago...
Yeah, it's been a while since...
The health unit...
We used to get letters back from them, saying approval or disapproval, but it stopped along the way.
They just stopped responding.
So then I would ask staff, then, can we address that matter? Because again, that's all we have as commissioners.
Yes, sir. We will bring something to you next month for your review.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I move for approval.
Moved by Mr. Bishop.
Second.
Second by Mr. Calendar. Any other questions, discussions? Any objection? Then the partition stands approved. Eight B is the Larry Jumanville property, lots 2C 1A1 and 2C 1A2.
Yeah, James Fogg, again, representing the Malay property, family partition. This was brought up back, I think, in August or September, and we just ran out of time in the 90 days. I'd like, maybe if we could put that on your agenda, things we can talk to about this year is increasing the 90 days, the way mortgages are and stuff like that, getting property transferred, 90 days is just, it's pushing it.
So, I mean, after we approve a family partition, it's got 90 days before it can...
The acts of donation have to be recorded within the 90-day period.
Within 90 days of our approval.
Otherwise, the approval is basically null, and they would have to rescind the application, which is what they've done.
And the mortgage people will not act until we act, right?
Yeah. Once you do approval, then they have to submit everything. You've got to get appraisal, you've got to get financing for a loan and everything like that. A lot of that just takes, you know, these days, just 90 days is really pushing it.
Yeah. What do you think would be a reasonable amount?
I would, at least, 120. Realistically, six months would be ideal, but, you know, anything over 90 days, another month or two would be wonderful.
And of course, that's not part of, I mean, you know, another thing that we can possibly discuss?
We would have to amend that in the code in order to...
And we've talked to a couple of councilmen, and they agree with us that the 90 days is pushing it.
Okay, so we have this request before us. Any questions by commissioners?
One comment. When you review the request and look at the drawing, well, I understand, and it's in concurrence with the code, that says a 20-foot private servitude, and the explanation says private driveway.
Mm-hmm.
When you look at the drawing, the drawings give the connotation of private servitude of access.
The private servitude of passage?
Passage, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
And again, when I look at driveway, passage, driveway?
Mm-hmm.
So, the only concern is, I'm going to assume, because that's in concurrence with the code, that which is labeled is this driveway, yes?
Yeah. I mean, that's the only access to the back of the lot.
Yes.
There's two other driveways with the mobile home accesses. You can see that there's a driveway there, and the other mobile home is a driveway as well. I mean, realistically, we're not going to create a third driveway. I would assume that eventually the mobile home is going to be, other, the mobile home to the left will be gone, but, you know, so it'll be only really two residents, one residence on the front lot, one on the back.
Thank you. Any other questions, discussion? What is your pleasure here?
Move for approval.
Mr. Burgess moves for approval, second by Mr. Calendar. Any other discussion? Any objection? Okay, the, our request stands approved.
Thank you.
Item number nine, public hearing to recommend approval or denial to the parish council, amendments to the Ascension Parish Unified Land Development Code. The first one is ordinance SR 1211, and the purpose of this is to add a mortgage verification section to the subdivision regulations. This is an old friend that has come back to us, right?
Yes, sir, and I'm going to suspect it will come back again. When this was originally pulled from the agenda, it was because we were informed by the parish legal attorney that he had spoken with another attorney. They wanted to get together and talk about the options and what we were going to do, and it got pulled off the agenda. We put it on the next month so that people wouldn't lose track of it. We put it on again this month so people wouldn't lose track of it. The meeting that was requested still hasn't happened.
Okay.
I would like to request that we put this off 30 more days, and we make a decision in the next, at the next meeting. If that meeting happens or doesn't happen, we will have that as a resource. But the reason we wanted this to move forward was to protect the people who are impacted by this, and nothing has been done in 90 days. And I'd like this commission to push a recommendation to the council so that they can decide if it's something we truly want to address.
Yeah. Would there be any downside to this mortgage verification? I mean, is there, would it cause a problem for anyone?
Okay, so, yes. I mean, if, if someone owns a piece of property, and they want to divide it, subdivide it, family partition it, however they want to do it, and as the case is now, they come to us, they submit their application, we review it, we send their comments, they come to you guys, or it's a simple division, and it gets done, and five years down the road, those lots have been sold or resold, and then one of them gets foreclosed on. But the bank was never made aware that the property was being divided, and so now they may be closing on one, two, three multiple property owners that were not part when that property was divided. So what we're going to do is, we're going to say, we want the banks to be made aware when property they own is being divided.
No, my question was, if we do enact this, what problem, would it cause a problem for anyone?
That person may not be able to get permission from their bank to subdivide their property and do a family partition or a simple division.
Yeah, and if there's a mortgage, he shouldn't get permission.
That would be the logical answer.
Okay, all right. So we'll visit this again next month?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then B, ordinance SR 1217, amendments to the Unified Land Development Code pertaining to servitudes and right-of-way requirements. And this appears to be clearing up language. Explain to me what's going to be changed by this proposed ordinance.
Well, you had this up, we had briefly discussed it last month, but basically, what It'll be to, first of all, it's going to consolidate several different code areas that we say where, what the servitude is going to be, so it's all in one place, so people don't have to go back and forth, and we don't end up with conflicting codes, saying, one code says one thing, another code says another thing. And it'll also, the drainage department would like to see a little bit larger of a servitude on the drainage easements, and instead of saying 7.5 feet, or just 15, we just say 15 feet of servitude for pipes under 60 inches. Now, it's going to say 7.5 feet from the outside of each pipe, of the pipe. So it'll increase it a little bit on the larger pipes also.
Okay.
And that's, you know, the main, the main items that will be adjusted. It's also clarifying the swales that are, there's a definition of a easement for a servitude that says that if it's a swale, and we're just defining what a swale consists of.
Okay. Questions?
Basically, where, I was going to add to that. Basically, what you're looking at from, the difference from what we submitted in your packets from last month, is Mr. Calendar had mentioned that we still hadn't addressed existing section 17-4038, which defined, in somewhat broad terms, what, what a servitude would be for a proposed lot. The language is actually changing that section to remove drainage completely from that, that portion of the code, and that code has been revised to reflect only utility servitudes, and remove drainage completely, and package that within the new proposed drainage servitude that basically lays out every option of a drainage servitude, definitions of what a swale is, and so on and so forth. So we feel like, there's like three actual sections of the code that are being revised, but it's clarifying all of those conflicting ideas and kind of consolidating the information into, you know, something that's more logical and easier to follow.
And are we, are they adding any servitudes to any of these ditches at all? It doesn't, you said it kind of, it's taking it from 15 foot and putting it to 7 and a half, that's 7 and a half each side of the pipe.
Yeah. Just, from, from, but instead of saying a 15-foot servitude, it's 7 and a half feet from the edge of the pipe.
Right.
So, if you have a 5-foot pipe, it's going to be a 20-foot servitude.
Right.
And that is the type of, and some of the other clarifications in one part of the code, we say one, you know, one thing of 5 feet on each side of the ditch, and in another code, we say if a ditch is 20 feet wide, then you have to go 10 feet on each side of the ditch, and it's just clarifying...
Yes, I see, like 40.
Making it consistent.
So none of that's changing, it's just kind of...
There's really no additional hardship, per se, on, on the drainage servitudes, other than if you want to think about the, the larger pipe scenario of adding servitude. All the other servitudes, we haven't made those restrictions any tougher. We've just added the language necessary to really define what each of them are and how each of them apply across the, the various options of the servitudes.
Other questions, comments? What is your pleasure?
So what are we doing with this? Are we...
Well, we, we could vote to recommend to the council that they adopt this amendment. That's, that's what our issue is at this point.
Let me say something.
Okay.
Since I was the one who addressed the issue, and I reviewed this, it certainly clears the ambiguities that I had.
Okay.
Because there were circumstances I was totally oblivious to, where it isn't 15 feet here, it's 10 feet or 20 feet. After reviewing this, certainly, any ambiguities and questions I had have been resolved, so I feel good with this.
Good enough to make a motion?
Move for approval.
All right.
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Neeseo. Any other question, discussion? Any objection? Okay, so it has been approved to send to the parish council for their approval. Item number 10, staff report.
Lance Brock is going to hand out something that Mike and I have been working on for the last month. They each get one, yeah. And what this is, is an item for consideration, and what we'd like you to do is review it this next month, and we can have a public hearing next month, or we can hold off a month and let you guys make some comments. What this is, is it's a revision to the subdivision regulations pertaining to servitude revocation. Today, we do not have a process put in place to define to the general public, how do you revoke a servitude? And so what we're doing is we're codifying the process to revoke a servitude. The other thing that we're doing is we're defining three different types of servitude revocation. And if you go through this packet, what you'll see is, number one, is unused or abandoned. It was recommended that we remove the words "or abandoned," which I don't have a problem with, so just an unused servitude. And what that is defined as, is that if a servitude was put in place and it hasn't been used for 15 years or more, it's unused, it's unneeded. It skips the planning commission process altogether and goes straight to the council. We're still going to require the letters of no objection from all the parties, and if they object, it'll slide down to a different category. But an unused servitude that's been 15 years or more will not come to the commission anymore. The second type is unneeded. Once again, if it's been less than 15 years, but all of the parties, the interested parties, utility companies, drainage department, they all say, we don't need it. That falls into that category, and it also skips this commission. Once again, no one who has the right to use it, needs it, or wants it, it goes straight to the council for the ordinance. The third one is a reduction in size or revision to the applicant request. So if there is a letter of objection, if the drainage department says, well, we can't revoke a 15-foot, but maybe we could reduce it to a 10, those types of requests would come through this body for a recommendation to the council. Anything that is objected to or revised to based on a letter of objection that we receive would then come to this body with a recommendation that would then go on to the council. The other thing we've done in this packet, which is the next section that you'll see, is we've created a little packet that will be an appendix to the ordinance when it's adopted, but what this is, is it'll be the thing that we hand out to the public, and it says, here's the process you're going to follow. It takes the ordinance, it breaks it down into a little simpler language, it talks about the types of those servitude requests, it gives all the addresses for the utility companies, and then it has an actual application that when they fill it out and they receive their letters of objection or no objection back, we'll be able to check those off. Currently, what happens is, somebody will call Michael and say, I want to do a servitude revocation. He'll look at a plat, or we'll pull a plat out of the file, we'll talk to them, we'll give them the, the application, and then over the next three, four, five, six months, we'll get a single letter at a time from these utility companies, it sort of randomly, haphazard happens, drainage sometimes takes a little while to answer. What we're going to do is revise this process to say, you don't come to us with an application until you have all your letters in hand. So that way, it becomes a little bit cleaner, and it establishes the process being, you get your letters and then you apply, and when you apply, you pay your fee, you submit your map, we'll have legal draft the ordinance. So all of that will come together to you guys as one packet that's all consistent and all, you know, timed right. So if the applicant is doing their due diligence, then when it comes to us, we don't have to wonder if things are missing or not in place. And then the last thing on, in that packet, is a letter. We're giving them a sample letter that they can send to these utility companies, to the drainage department, that says, here's who I am, here's where the property is located, here's what my request is, please send me a letter back. So we're putting together this in, and, you know, it's based on what we found in Baton Rouge, but we've also tweaked it a little bit so it suits our needs. But one of the other questions we've had when we do servitude requests is, do we require a posting, a sign? Currently, the code doesn't exempt servitude revocations, so we make those people buy a $50 worth of signs to put out on their property, even when there's letters of no objection or they're unneeded servitudes. So we've, we've crafted some language that says, there's no advertising, adjacent property notification, or property posting requirements for a servitude revocation request to appear before the planning commission. So we put that in the code so there's no more confusion as to whether or not they have to post, they have to advertise in the paper, or, or send letters, so...
Ricky, I have a question on, on the case of unused or unneeded servitudes. Is there something in place where they still have to contact your office with the request after it falls under one of those categories, or do they just assume, well, it hadn't been used in 30 years, so I don't have a servitude?
So...
How do we police that?
Joe Santamal comes to our office, and they want to do a servitude revocation. We'll hand them this packet. They will fill out the application, they will send the letters out to the utility companies. When they send their application back to us, when we're reviewing it to go into the monthly packet, we'll look at it and say, what's the date of that plat? Oh, 1985, that falls into the first category. It's unused, it hadn't been used for 25 years, whatever. If it's unneeded, we get all the letters of no objection, but it was established in 2002, that, we, we will make that determination when we receive the complete application and are able to review it.
What I'm asking is that there's something in place that requires that they do contact your office and just doesn't assume, well, it's 30 years and this servitude hasn't been used, so I can do what I need to do with it, I don't have to contact anybody. How do we police it to make sure that they do contact your office for these letters and, I mean...
Well, ultimately, the reason most people are revoking a servitude is so they can build something on top of it.
Permits.
So if they come to get a permit and that servitude hasn't been revoked...
That'll work.
We're back in the picture.
That'll work, thank you.
Now, what's the standard public notice period for this?
What's the...
Standard, is there standardized public notice period?
We have a public notice period that's required by code that's standard for our major subdivisions, our minor subdivisions, our failing partitions. Servitudes aren't addressed in the public notice requirements. We've just always noticed them, but we give a little flexibility because it's not addressed in the code.
Well, my concern is, let's assume Joe Santamal's neighbor has a problem. We had a situation not too long ago where someone said, we were not informed. Now, whether they were or not, I remember that. So now, let's assume there's a public notice period, then everyone is given the opportunity, like, wait a minute, this is going to impact my property.
That is a perfectly valid point, but, it's my opinion that a servitude isn't, if my neighbor objects to me revoking a utility servitude, it's still the responsibility of the utility companies to have a free passage to that neighbor? And if the utility companies don't object to my revocation, what right does my neighbor have to say that I can't revoke it? Same thing with drainage. It's the drainage department's responsibility to ensure, and if they don't object, what right does my neighbor have to say, well, no, I'm using his property to drain? I mean, it's sort of, the people who have the right to that servitude, if they don't object, the neighbor shouldn't have the right to object, because it's on my property.
And I understand, and I guess the concern is, if, let's say, the neighbor, if he has to go out there and hire someone to do a survey and prove that, look at the impact it has on, on my property, that is the concern.
Yeah, that, that becomes more of a civil matter in our minds if, if a property is affecting a neighbor's property. If, if a drainage, if the drainage department has no objection to revoking a drainage servitude, the neighbor shouldn't have a say of whether or not I want that 15, 25, whatever it is, to remain in place forever. I mean...
I guess there's no letter of, no objection required by a neighbor...
Right.
...to get it done? I guess that would be the way of categorizing it, maybe?
Baton Rouge requires adjacent property owners be notified on all servitude revocations.
Do they?
And we had this debate in my office two days ago, and I said...
And would that be...
I just don't know that I want my neighbor having a say of whether or not I can revoke my servitude on my property.
Well, no, it's a valid challenge, not something arbitrary or capricious, well, I don't want it, whatever the case may be. And if they bring a valid challenge where there's, like I said, they could pay for some company to come out and do a survey and, and raise a valid issue, then the concern was, there would be warrant to, like, wait a minute, let's hold up the process and check, in lieu of not having a public notice period. And like I said, I remember the lady said, we were not notified, but that was the concern there.
So in the case of one and two, when they're going to skip this body altogether, they're going to go to the parish council as an introduction of an ordinance to revoke a servitude on a particular lot of record. That will be publicly noticed in the paper, as an introduction of an ordinance. The public could come and talk. I would argue that no one reads that paper for those types of things. Are they really noticed? If we want to notice people, you've got to require adjacent property mailouts for everything. I mean, honestly, if that's how you want to do it. And I don't have a problem doing it. I'm looking for direction from you guys. Historically, you are going to see the non-professional engineer neighbor complain that what we're doing is impacting his property, but he has no proof. He hasn't spent the money, and you guys could defer it 30 days for him to get the proof? In all likelihood, that's not going to happen. He's just going to come back and say, you're affecting my property, I don't want you to do this.
In the case like that, I would, or I say, engineering comment, please. Subject matter expert, give me your expertise. And that's the concern I have, you know?
Sounds like the way to fix that would be to require a letter of no objection from adjacent property owners.
Something, something...
I mean, is that something you'd want to see put in place, or...
That's the concern I have. Remember, early on, the concern I had is, we had to review in cases, and I'd say, subject matter expert, please give me your comment, because there were times when it was not in the packet. And without you guys, it's going to be a lot more tedious for us to make decisions. So that document helps me out a lot, like, my subject matter expert has just informed me with that document, I feel comfortable accepting or not comfortable in an eye.
But in that case, we'll become the arbiter between two different experts that'll give us two different opinions.
I agree with Mr. Compton.
us two different opinions. I, I agree with Mr. Compton that if the drainage department, that engineering department says it has no impact, then we should take our own governmental department's advice.
Again, the concern I had, there were times when there wasn't a response from our subject matter expert, okay? And at the same time, saying that, okay, there are times when the subject matter expert can be wrong.
But on, on this form, that, that they'll, on this application, that they will have to fill out, and there's check-off boxes from the drainage department, our own drainage department will have to approve it, and so will all the other utilities.
Let's hope we do. Again, there were situations where we did not have anything with Ascension Parish gravity drainage ditch. There were quite a few of them, and I asked, early on, I asked that, can't they be present or at least have a document there? Being thorough, I think, I feel is an obligation, be thorough enough before running a decision or recommendation. That was the point.
Just for the record, I do believe that those cases were when they actually objected to it, but didn't give you a reason for their objection. And we actually had the council adopt a resolution that directed all departments that send a recommendation to this body to give a reason if it's in the negative. And so, we haven't seen it since we had that issue...
Yes.
But I agree with Mr. Callender. If, if we do get these letters that say, I object, but don't give a reason, then, yeah, there's an issue there. We need to know, why do you object, and, and have it not be arbitrary and capricious in nature. But when they say, we don't object to the servitude revocation, I agree with Mr. Bishop. That's, I, I'm not gonna question the engineering or drainage department. They've made their statement, they don't object to it. They're not gonna say why they don't object, they just don't object.
Other questions, comments?
No other questions.
Okay. So the issue before us then, would we want to place this on the agenda for our February meeting?
I move that we do.
Mr. Bishop moves?
And I would second that.
Mr. Callender seconds, that we put this on the agenda of our February meeting, this item concerning this process for revoking servitudes. Any other questions, discussions? Any objections? Okay, please place this in on the agenda of our next meeting.
All right. Secondly, as Mr. Sanji spoke, we're going to schedule some time in the next thirty to sixty days to do some additional training. With, with all of the growth pressure that's coming, we want you guys to be aware of all the processes and all of the things that you need to be aware of in making your decisions, and how those decisions can be affected by the growth pressures and those different influences on development. So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna schedule these times to get you guys in, and it's really just gonna be educational, that we're not making any decisions, we're not coming to any resolutions, we're not pushing things to this commission or this body as a whole. It's just educational. So, once again, I'll get with Mr. Sanji, we'll schedule some times that's convenient for everyone. We'll probably have to block a two or a three-hour window to come in, at least for the first one, just to sort of get the, I'm gonna call it the educational ball, but get the ball rolling. So hopefully, we can get through these in, in one or two meetings, and, and get you guys back, back on track with, with those kinda decision processes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman? Does this have to be, since we're meeting as a body, have to be a public meeting that's noticed, or because it's training, we don't have to?
I'm gonna defer to legal.
Okay, legal. Okay, so is it open to the public?
Okay. That completes your report, then?
That completes my report.
Okay. Item eleven, the engineering staff report.
Yeah, we just wanted to go over some of the projects we got going on. There are still three subdivisions in their bond period, which they've completed their infrastructure construction, they're building the houses, and they place a bond for part of the construction and for the, for a differing length, but it's usually one year. Then we also have five subdivisions that are under construction now. We just approved the one which made it last, last month, there was four, so now we have five that are under construction. And, and then there are two, or one that is, that has been approved, they can go to construction, but it's not under construction yet, they have other things going on, so they haven't started construction on this portion of the development. And then we also have two subdivisions which are under review now, which we're looking at the construction plans for those.
Can you kinda give us a ballpark, it's the, the number of lots in those subdivisions?
Yes. There are two hundred and eleven under the bond period. There are about five hundred and twenty-seven that are under construction. The infrastructure is under construction. Another hundred and three lots are, those are the ones that are approved, but they haven't gone to construction yet. And then there are another ninety-six that are, we're reviewing for construction. So that's a total of nine hundred and thirty-seven lots. And then in addition to that, there are forty-two commercial sites that can go to construction. They've been given their drainage approval, so they may be under construction now, and there are eight of those, eight additional ones that we are reviewing for their construction.
Any questions, comments? Does that conclude your report?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So that brings us to item twelve, adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Mr. Callender?
Second.
Any, any objections? Meeting is adjourned. We will begin the zoning commission meeting at approximately six forty-five.